Testing, testing. Testing.
Thank you for joining us today.
Bonjour mesdames et messieurs, nous allons commencer la réunion dans une minute. Si le public peut prendre ses chaises et les membres du Conseil peut prendre leurs chaises.
Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue à la première réunion du Conseil municipal de 2015.
Bienvenue à notre première réunion.
Bienvenue à notre première réunion.
S'il vous plaît, montez pour prier et restez en position pour la chanson du chanson national.
Dieu puissant, aide-nous à travailler ensemble afin de bien servir nos citoyens. C'est un plaisir de demander à le conseiller Wilkinson de présenter notre invité spécial qui fera et fera de la chanson "Au Canada".
Merci monsieur le maire. Ici, pour présenter le chanson national, est le groupe de guitare de récesses de l'école W. Erskine Johnson. Nouvelle fondée en février 2014, cela a commencé quand Mme Stevens, une enseignante de classe six, maintenant de cinq six en fait, a été demandée par des étudiants de rester au cours d'une période récessive et de donner quelques points sur la façon de jouer la guitare. Elle a maintenant 50 enfants dans ce groupe. Ils ne sont pas tous ici aujourd'hui, il n'y a pas de place pour eux tous. Quand la prochaine récesses est arrivée, un autre étudiant s'est inscrit et depuis ça, ça a grandi jusqu'à 20 l'année dernière et maintenant c'est jusqu'à 50. Certains d'entre eux jouent la guitare, certains chantent et la plupart d'entre eux font les deux. Ils se rencontrent à la récesses matinée et à la récessive dimanche dans un portable parce qu'elle enseigne dans un portable derrière la école. Et ils ont beaucoup de fun. Ils ont beaucoup de fun en jouant des pièces top 40 comme "Royals" par Lorde, "22" par Taylor Swift et "Roar" par Katy Perry. Le groupe a fait le show l'année dernière à la récréation annuelle du Canada Nord et Mme Stevens a pris du temps pendant une vacance d'été pour continuer à pratiquer avec les enfants. Elle sait que les enfants vont très bientôt en outre, mais une autre enseignante a mentionné que Mme Stevens a donné aux enfants le feu et les enfants l'aiment. C'est une grande addition au curriculum scolaire fait par une enseignante qui permet aux enfants de... Elle n'a plus le temps de récesses maintenant, et les enfants ne l'ont pas de récesses, mais ils n'ont pas de problème. Voici donc le groupe de guitare de récesses de W. Erskine Johnson.
Nous avons une demande spéciale qui est venue parce que les étudiants étaient assez bons pour venir de la communauté de Wilkinson et apporter toutes leurs guitares. Et beaucoup d'entre vous, je sais, sont désolés que vous n'ayez pas pu obtenir des tickets à Taylor Swift parce que leur show est vendu. Mais ils savent l'un des greats chansons de Taylor Swift et ils l'ont pratiqué, donc nous allons leur demander de chanter une autre chanson pour nous. Donc merci beaucoup les étudiants de W. Erskine Johnson et à vous. That was great. Thank you very, very much. And I saw Scott Moffett and John Willing singing to that last song. And councillor Shirelli said it should have been sung at the last council meeting. We're never going to get back together again. But you did a great job, students from W. Erskine Johnson. Thank you very, very much. Merci beaucoup. Let's give them another round of applause, folks. They practiced hard. Thank you very, very much. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Margaret Knight to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award presentation. And I'd invite Ms. Knight's councillor, Rick Shirelli, to join us, as well as councillor Mark Taylor, whose ward is home to Margaret's breakfast and lunch program. So Margaret, if you'd like to come forward, and I know you have family and friends and volunteers with you, and it's a great honor to have you at city council. If you just want to come right up here, welcome. And here come the councillors. It's said that breakfast is the most important meal of the day.
It's said that breakfast is the most important meal of the day.
However, even in a city as prosperous as Ottawa, many still don't have access to a healthy and nourishing start to the day. Margaret has dedicated herself to improving the lives of children who don't have a chance to start their school day with a good meal. Diligently arriving at the Foster Farm Community Center before the sun rises, Margaret works to provide these students with all the tools they need to start their day of learning. In addition to providing breakfast five days a week, Margaret also leads a lunch program twice a week. Despite several personal setbacks over the years, Margaret hasn't let this deter her from continuing to prepare and plan meals for those in the community in need. Upon being informed she was selected for the City Builder Award, Margaret's first thought it was for her colleague Linda McCuey.
Upon being informed she was selected for the City Builder Award, Margaret first thought it was for her colleague Linda McCuey.
...community center team who has continued Margaret's important work while she heals from a recent setback. Thank you, Linda. Merci beaucoup, Linda. Margaret's generosity doesn't stop with her work at Foster Farm either. She is an active volunteer at the Starwood Nursing Home in Napier, St. Vincent Hospital, and is often seen around the community delivering meals on wheels. For these contributions to the community and numerous others, it's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award, the first of 2015. We thank you, Margaret, for your dedication, your selflessness, and your love of your community. Congratulations.
Members of council, my friends who are here, I would thank you very much for putting my name in for this award. We came to Ottawa from Winnipeg in 1979. Way back. When we got here, I was really down, because we had left two children behind in Winnipeg. So I went to talk to our minister, and he said, "You need to get involved," which I did. That was almost 35 years ago. I'd like to... It's already been said about meals on wheels. You meet so many great people when you're volunteering, and it's a good way to have some extra time to help other people. One of these special people that has already been mentioned is Linda. And I am so thankful, because she can't do things alone. And Linda has, for many years, come and opened the center for me at 6:30 in the morning, and then proceeds to cook breakfast for the children, so they get a healthy breakfast start. But Linda can't do it alone, and there's many volunteers that have helped out, that are sitting here smiling back at me. It's good to see you. Yeah. The lunch has gone down to two times a week, and Ron McCuey has taken on a lot of the cooking, which is... He's another volunteer. And I just want to thank you so very, very much, all of you volunteers. It's really fun volunteering, right? In September, I had the misfortune to have a very bad accident. I was picking bread up, though, at the time, so I was working. But you don't fall over a bag of bread, because I broke my pelvis and my wrist and there's slight concussion, so that totally put me out of action. And again, I called on... I have to thank the volunteers at Foster for keeping it going, because it was five months before I could come back. We just would like to say that volunteering is so great. It's a good way to help other people. And it's very easy to get to be a volunteer. There's no paperwork, no nothing. I have three words to say. I can help. And there you go. It's just great. And I thank you all from the bottom of my heart for that.
Well, thank you very, very much. It was a beautiful speech. Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour et bonne année à tous.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Council, a very happy new year, and hope that you had a restful Christmas and holiday season. Because, as you know, we have a very busy year ahead of us. Much of that work will begin next week as we table our first draft budget of the term. I want to thank all members of council for providing their input into this year's budget process. I have appreciated hearing firsthand the priorities you have for your ward and your areas of interest as we work together over the next four years. I also want to thank the public for providing their ideas, whether it is directly to their ward councillor or to my office through the consultation process.
Most of our work would start with the budget process that will be launched next week. I'd like to thank the residents and the councillors who have taken a direct role in those suggestions.
A year of momentum. By this I mean, we will build on the momentum we started in the last few years. And we will continue to focus our energies towards building an even better city. Let me give you a few examples by looking back at our most recent accomplishments. City council unanimously approved the Stage Two LRT project and the transportation master plan. We decided to move forward with Arts Court and the Bayview Innovation Centre, and we continued work on the key features of the Confederation Line, shaping the future of Ottawa's transportation system.
In addition to these great projects, we have started major investments that will improve the lives of all residents throughout the city.
Opening of several significant investments in our city's quality of life. This includes big mobility improvements such as the Vimy Memorial Bridge in councillor Kakush's ward, and the Airport Park Bridge that joins councillor Brockington and councillor Deane's wards. We've added new community space in our fastest-growing areas, including the Richcraft Sensplex East in councillor Tierney's ward, the Francois Dupuy Pool in councillor Blais' ward, the Richcraft Recreation Complex in councillor Wilkinson's ward, the Minto Recreation Complex in councillor Harder's ward, the New Greeley Library in councillor DeRouze's ward, and the expansion of the Goulburn Recreation Centre in councillor Cadre's ward with the addition of the Matt Bradley Arena. In councillor Chernoshenko's ward, we can't forget the beautiful new Lansdowne Park, a magnificent improvement being enjoyed by residents and visitors from all over.
From the Sensplex East Richcraft Centre to Lansdowne Park, these are very impressive projects in Ottawa.
Deane will have no shortage of cranes and bulldozers. Signs of momentum are all around us. I think you will be able to get that sense at our upcoming LRT showcase at Lansdowne Park, taking place in February and March. Throughout our history, Lansdowne Park and the Aberdeen Pavilion were witness to significant moments in our history and our city's history. Many of these moments had to do with new products and innovation. For example, in 1877, Ottawa's Thomas O'Hearn gave the first demonstration of a telephone at Lansdowne Park. In 1892, he exhibited a series of new electrical equipment such as an early electric oven and electric water heaters. Today, of course, these items are commonplace, but at the time, they were life-changing innovations that made the world a better place. And tomorrow, another great innovation will be unveiled at the Aberdeen Pavilion, the world-class Alstom Citadis Spirit Train. Ottawa residents have heard about this LRT project for more than a decade. Only recently, they began to see progress at construction sites in several locations around the city. Tomorrow, it truly becomes tangible. You will be able to not only see the train, but feel the train. You'll be able to sit inside, look out the windows, and get your first experience of the Confederation Line.
Tomorrow, you will have the opportunity to experience the LRT at Lansdowne. You can see and feel the Confederation Line.
As thousands of people visit the train over the coming weeks and months. Residents and visitors will be able to visit the LRT showcase starting this Friday, and it will be open every day from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I'm so excited that I'll be able to share this experience with the public and with visitors to our city. Our vision for light rail has much to do with momentum. When we inaugurate the Confederation Line during this term of council in 2018, we want to turn around and pick up the shovel to break ground on stage two of this project. As we continue with environmental assessments for the project this year, we'll continue to improve our plan to extend LRT farther east, west, and south. Working with our transportation chair, councillor Egli, we're moving forward with this city transforming project. Ottawa deserves a world-class transportation system like this one, and I would argue that it is long overdue.
Ottawa deserves a world-class transportation system like this one, and I would argue that it's long overdue.
You look at the other G7 capitals of the world, Paris, Berlin, Rome, Tokyo, London, and Washington, Ottawa has the distinction of being the only one that has yet to build a significant rapid rail system for its commuters and visitors. Even domestically, Ottawa is catching up. Over the last 10 years, we have spent debating and refining the Confederation Line. Calgary and Vancouver opened a combined 42 kilometers of new rapid transit lines. Now Ottawa has momentum, and together, we're delivering better transportation for the capital city of the greatest country in the world. When you look at what's to come over the next 12 months, you get a sense that Ottawa is on the cusp of something special. There has never been a more exciting time to be in the nation's capital, and together, we are building new institutions that will shape and define our city for generations to come.
There's never been a more exciting time to be in the nation's capital.
This year, construction will move forward on two major facilities, the New Arts Court and Bayview Innovation Centre. Located in the wards of councillors Fleury and Leper, these will be truly regional facilities that will be enjoyed by residents from across the city. With these, we will support and celebrate our city's most talented creators. They will be unique community gathering places where we can nurture Ottawa innovation. On the canvas or on the drawing board, in the theatre or in the marketplace, our artists and entrepreneurs tell the story of Ottawa we all know and love, a city that is dynamic, progressive, and capable of great things. We need to create places that are worthy of our city's talent, ambition, and potential.
We need to create places that are worthy of our city's talent, ambition, and potential. This year, the construction of the new Arts Court and Innovation Centre will start. And then, this will be followed by a great project, another great project, the Central Library.
A new central library. With the right plan and the right partnership, I believe we can deliver a truly world-class facility for the nation's capital. This will be a complex project, and we want to do it right. As a first step, councillor Tierney and I, along with the library board, will host a public engagement meeting right here at City Hall in March of this year. We'll bring together the community as a first step to begin this important conversation. What features does it need? What opportunities can it bring? How can it build on our strengths? This will be one of several community engagement opportunities as we take these steps towards forward, rather, as a city. I want this process to represent everything our new library should be, open, collaborative, and dynamic. I'm pleased to also announce today that we will make the Mayor's Rural Expo a permanent event. Working with councillor Moffett, Chair of the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, we will work to make this the best year yet. we will work to make this the best year yet. We launched this event two years ago as a pilot project. It seeks to bridge the rural-urban divide by showcasing the outstanding people, products, and attractions of our rural communities. And we do so in conjunction with Food Aid Day in support of the Ottawa Food Bank.
In addition to this Mayor's Rural Expo, we will have a demonstration of the third major industry.
Develop a long-term growth strategy for our city's third-largest industry. We know that 2017 will be a banner year. But how do we avoid the 2017 hangover in 2018 and beyond? As the private sector builds more hotels and our event organizers host larger events, how do we ensure that our tourism industry can continue to attract these large numbers? In 2015, we'll also continue to roll out our Ottawa 2017 brand across the city in order to build local momentum. Under the leadership of our new 2017 co-chairs, Councillors Fleury and Cloutier, we will continue to raise awareness and excitement among our residents and visitors to Ottawa.
2017 will be an important year for tourism as well as for our visitors, and we want the community to participate.
Establish a strong presence at the Ottawa Train Station in recent months, and you will see similar signage going up at the airport, city streets, and local businesses. This will also include an exciting expansion of our 417 underpass mural program. This year, we're seeking MTO approval to create murals at two new locations under the 417. At Bank Street, between Councillor McKennie and Councillor Chernoshenko's wards, and at Carling, west of Kirkwood, between Councillor Leaper and Councillor Brockington's wards. As we saw from the first set of murals this past year, this program provides us with an easy way to brighten up our neighborhoods and support local artists. We'll build momentum towards building a more livable city this year as well. We opened a pedestrian and cycling bridge over the 417 at Coventry Road in just a few weeks. This will connect Councillor Cloutier's ward with Councillor Nussbaum's ward. And Councillor Fleury and Nussbaum will be happy to see construction continue on a much-needed bridge over the Rideau River to connect Donald and Somerset Streets. It will open next year, providing an important east-west connection to existing active transportation infrastructure. These two bridges, I've mentioned, will close gaps in our transportation network. They're also how we'll make white walking and cycling safer and more convenient options.
All these initiatives aim to make our city safer and more practical for...
We'll see the Constance and Buckham Bay's Community Centre expansion open later this year. Councillor El Shantiri, who's taken a leadership role on this, and the community have worked hard on this project, which will see new library space, a multi-use room, and a fitness room at it. While we make in community improvements like this, we'll make environmental investments as well. The city of Ottawa is proud to partner with Ecology Ottawa on its Tree Ottawa project over the coming years. Together with the community, we will plant 1 million trees in time for 2017. I think this will be a wonderful way for our community to work together and pass along the gift of cleaner air and better tree cover to the next generation.
We will be planting by 2017 in partnership with Ecology Ottawa, 1 million trees.
Other issues, we can do more when we work together. A great example of this has been the strong thing on addressing guns and gangs in our city. The Ottawa Police Service, under the leadership of Eli El Shantiri, has been working with Crime Prevention Ottawa, under the leadership of Chad Cadri and other community groups to take action. I also want to thank Councillors Shirelli and Taylor for bringing together residents in their wards to speak openly and honestly about the challenges we face as a city. We all have a role to play, and the city will continue to show leadership on this file in the months ahead.
I'm looking forward to continue to cooperate in 2015 with the Mayor of Gatineau, Maxime Penaud-Joubin, with whom I have excellent relations. We will together attend several events, and we will continue to work on several issues in the interest of residents of both cities.
2015, I look forward to continuing our strong relationship with the city of Gatineau. I've been working more closely with the Mayor of Gatineau, Maxime Penaud-Joubin, than ever before. We attended, for instance, each other's inauguration ceremonies and together placed a wreath at the War Memorial this past Remembrance Day, a first. In 2015, we'll continue to collaborate on issues of mutual interest, including transportation and transit between our two great cities. I'll be meeting with Mayor Penaud-Joubin again in Gatineau in the first half of 2015 to continue strengthening our partnership. 2015 will be a big year for baseball and other sports. Our Can-Am baseball team will take to the field at the Ottawa Baseball Stadium, thanks to the strong support of members of council, in particular, Councillor Monnet. We look forward to cheering on our champions, the Ottawa Champions, during the warmer weather in May. The Miracle League of Ottawa's fully-accessible baseball field will also be completed this year in the ward of Councillor Middick, our new sports commissioner. We're very proud that Canada's second fully-accessible baseball facility will open for children and young adults with special needs. Of course, Ottawa will host the Canadian Little League Championships this summer in Councillor Harder's ward. This will be yet another event to showcase our city to families from across Canada. On a larger scale, we can't forget the FIFA Women's World Cup, coming to Lansdowne in June. This will give Ottawa a priceless international audience as we host some of the best female soccer players in the world. This exposure is so important for our city's reputation and the long-term growth of our economy.
2015 will be a very exciting year for sports and the return of baseball and the Ottawa Champions, as well as the Women's World Cup at FIFA that will take place at Lansdowne this summer.
Optimistic in our outlook for economic growth in the coming year. In December, the region's unemployment rate was 6.1 percent, still below the national rate of 6.6, but still too high. But we're reminded by the departure of retailers such as Target that no city is immune to bumps along the road. We must also remember that our population is growing faster than the national average, and with it comes added pressure of ensuring that there are good jobs and a high quality of life. I believe we are on the right track. Invest Ottawa is continuing to do great work as it approaches its third anniversary. Our entrepreneurs and startups are being given the support they need to prosper and grow. Our Economic Development and Innovation Department will renew its strategy in 2015. It will begin to introduce new tools and programs to ensure Ottawa City Hall can be a true partner with the private sector and its mission to create jobs and grow our economy. To reflect on two specifics, we will soon create a way for local businesses to pilot their technologies or products in municipal operations. This program was inspired by an inquiry raised by Councillor Hubley during the last term of council, and I think it's a great one. Soon, our Economic Development Department will act as the point of contact for any local startup business that wishes to pilot new technologies. From there, they will choose a select number of innovations annually. If we can help a business refine a technology before it moves into mass production by acting as a test case, I think we should carefully consider it. The benefit to the city can include reduced costs and an innovative way of delivering services. The benefit to our local entrepreneurs could include the ability to test and refine a technology before it goes to market. And I think this will be a win-win. A second new economic initiative will have to do with taking a serious approach to attracting and retaining talent. In 2015, we'll begin to do this by developing a strategy and talent attraction toolkit, toolkit rather. This will allow us to market our city more clearly as a great place to live and to do business. We need to remember that we're competing against other cities for the best and the brightest. Why should a family choose to come to Ottawa instead of Toronto, Montreal, or Calgary? How do we appeal to the interests of the most highly coveted, highly-educated worker as well as their spouse and children? Ottawa is very good at tourism marketing, the kind of messaging that will attract someone for a long weekend. But this kind of message will be focused on attracting people for a lifetime. Ottawa does have a great story to tell, but I think we need to do a better job telling that story.
Our employment market is in good shape, and we must do always more to attract businesses and people. I think that these measures will help us reach our goal.
To close my remarks by sharing two significant civic projects coming up in 2015. The first has to do with the terrible and tragic bus train crash of 2013. In partnership with Councillor Harder, we will begin the process of creating an appropriate memorial for the six neighbors we lost on that fateful September day. We will approach this project carefully and respectfully, and we understand the emotions are still very raw. I want to thank Councillor Harder for ongoing liaison with the families. The second civic recognition has to do with Daniel Alfredsson, former captain of our Ottawa Senators. As you know, Daniel retired last month after 18 years in the National Hockey League. On the ice, he was our captain. In the community, he was a leader. From the Ottawa Senators' Foundation to the Royal Ottawa Mental Health Centre, to Rogers House, to CHIO, he devoted his time and his energy to making our city a better place. He embraced Ottawa with the same way that we embraced him. And for that, today, I'm pleased to announce that Daniel has accepted my offer to receive the key to the city in a ceremony in March. This is our city's highest civic honour and one that he has earned for everything he has done for Ottawa.
Dear colleagues, 2015 will have its challenges, big and small. Some will define our city for generations to come. I'm certain that together, we will succeed in building a better city, a more livable, a more dynamic, and a more prosperous city.
...and projects, both big and small. The FX of which will define our city for a generation to come. I look forward to collaborating closely with you on these important steps over the year to come. And together, we will build momentum towards a more livable, caring, vibrant, and prosperous city. Thank you. Merci beaucoup.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Taylor. Meant resolved at the Mayor's remarks given at the City Council meeting on January 28, 2015. Me appended to the minutes of today's council meeting.
On the motion, carried. Thank you very much, Councillor Monnet and Taylor. A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Concierge Monnet. Councillor Middick. Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor El Shantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadre.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egli.
Present.
Councillor Deane.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Concierge Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Nussbaum. Councillor McKennie.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Present.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Concierge Cloutier.
Present.
Concierge Blay.
Present.
Councillor DeRouze.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakush.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
You have quorum. Thank you.
Adoption de process verbe, confirmation of minutes of the 3rd December 2014 and the regular meeting of the 10th of December 2014. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally rising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflits d'intérêt. Communications as presented, petitions as presented, regrets, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports. Motion pourtant présentation de rapport. Concierge Shirelli and Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you. Your worship has moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Fleury, that the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending the 23rd of January 2015 and Planning Committee Report Number One be received and considered, and that the Rules of Procedure be suspended to receive and consider reports from the Selection Panel Ottawa Public Library Board entitled Appointments to the Ottawa Public Library Board, and the report from the Selection Panel Transit Commission entitled Appointments to the Transit Commission, subsection 29.3. Because of the urgency of these items contained in the reports, specific reasons are set out below, and I can read them if I need to. And that the 201 signature petitions submitted by residents requesting that temporary fireworks locations and trailers not be permitted to operate within the city of Ottawa listed under Communications be received.
The motion carried. Carried, adopté. Item number one, Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 23rd of January 2015. Received. Selection Panel Ottawa Public Library Board Report One. Councillor Nussbaum wishes to hold that. The next item is Appointments to the Transit Commission. I think they go together, Councillor Nussbaum. Are you okay? On this Transit Commission, carried. Committee Reports, Planning Committee Report Number One.
Planning Committee.
House 187 Billings Avenue, a property designated under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. Carried.
Dissent.
Dissent by Councillor Moffett. Bulk Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the Bulk Consent Agenda? On the Bulk Consent Agenda as presented, carried. So, back to the Library Board. Councillor Nussbaum has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I'd take the opportunity, since this is the first time that we're dealing with the approval of citizen members of any of the commissions or boards, to give a quick comment and perhaps a question to the clerk, if I might. I sat in on the interviews for the Built Heritage Subcommittee Reserve members, and I was certainly encouraged by the excellent quality of the candidates there. But one of the things that I found is I was a little bit at a loss in terms of sort of understanding exactly on what basis I should be looking at the candidates, whether specific competencies or qualities, whether particular interview questions that I should be asking. You know, are there typically for these situations grids or scoring mechanisms? Should I be evaluating a candidate's outside business interests? Is that relevant, notwithstanding that these issues are volunteer jobs? So, my question to the clerk is whether he's aware of any such sort of guidance or guidelines for selection panel members in the exercise of their duty of choosing citizen members, perhaps within the province of Ontario, and whether or not that's been examined. Could this be part of something the clerk could look at in the context of the midterm governance review? Because I, for one, would have benefited from having a little bit of structure, certainly as I went through that, and a little bit of clarity on some of these tricky issues. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, no, I know that the city of Ottawa does not have such guidelines. And I know that there are some in some of the larger municipalities in Ontario that I'm aware of. And I would be pleased to bring it back in midterm governance to provide that oversight and assistance.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Shirelli, please. Okay. Okay, so on the Appointments to the Ottawa Public Library Board as presented, carried. Thank you. Motion to adopt reports. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Fleury, that the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending the 23rd of January 2015, the report from the Selection Panel of the Ottawa Public Library Board entitled Appointments to the Ottawa Public Library Board, and the report from the Selection Panel Transit Commission entitled Appointments to the Transit Commission, and Planning Committee Report One be received and adopted as amended.
Carried, adopté. Merci. Motions of which notice has been previously given. Councillor Blay and Deane have a motion with respect to the U-Pass. Councillor Blay, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, Algonquin College successfully had a referendum to join the U-Pass late last year when Councillor Deane and I provided notice. There is a small technical change to which I had provided notice for, to allow for the discussion of a summer renewal as part of the discussions. Because that was something Algonquin raised, and it's to give direction to allow that same discussion to happen for all the institutions. And this sets the framework by which we would authorize OC Transport to go into those negotiations to continue the U-Pass at our three post-secondary institutions that I would encourage.
and I would encourage everyone to support it.
If no one wants to speak, I just want to congratulate OC Transport, because I know councillor Deans started the process, and now councillor Blay will take over into staff, and particularly the students at Algonquin, because this was a project that was not embraced by the previous student administration, and I know councillor Shirelli met with them on a number of times, because the college is in his ward, and it was an overwhelming endorsement of the U-Pass, because I think they saw the success at both Ottawa U, Carlton, and St. Paul's. So we have four of the five post-secondary institutions who are using the U-Pass, which gives a significant discount to those people who use the bus at those institutions, and it provides a steady predictable stream of revenue to OC Transport. So a big congratulations to the students, the student leadership at Algonquin who worked hard on the referendum, offered the choice to the students, and the reason it's before us is that this is required for the board of governors of Algonquin to make their decision before they make the recommendation to the Minister of Training Colleges and Universities. So merci beaucoup à tous les étudiants de Algonquin et les membres...
Thank you to all the students at Algonquin and the management at OC Transport and all staff who worked on this project.
... in September of this upcoming school year. Thank you. On the motion, councillor Brockington, did you have a comment on U-Pass?
Question. Okay. Thank you, your worship. Just a few questions, if I may. I just wanted to double check, just based on the wording, it says in the first therefore paragraph that this would be on a continuing basis, so I just want to make sure that this enshrines this type of, the U-Pass program would be enshrined, that it's not going to come back to council every year. I just want to verify that. Is that the case?
To Pat, Pat who knows every route in the city of Ottawa.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
And then, can I also ask, your worship, the amount of $192.70 for a four-month semester, how did that amount get calculated?
Mr. Mayor, that is a 2.5% increase on the amount that's charged currently, consistent with the previous decisions of council and consistent also with the direction of council and the long-term affordability plan for transit.
Okay. And finally, we have seen transit fare increases of 7.5%. I think there was three years in a row that we saw those increases, and I note that there's wording in the motion here that we would cap increases at 2.5% for future years. Is that a reasonable percentage increase to enshrine now, based on some of the pressures that OC Transport has had to wrestle in past years? Is that, I just want to make sure that the financial pressures that the commission might be facing in the future will be realized through increases that are passed along to students. Is 2.5% a reasonable amount? Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Blay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could answer that, it's actually been quite some time since increases are in the seven and a half range. It's been more than four years since that's happened, would be my first answer. Secondly, what's outlined in the motion is consistent with the long-range financial plan for transit, which was approved in 2011 unanimously by city council, and I would expect that what you'll see in the budget tabling next week will be consistent with that long-range financial planning process that we went through a few years ago.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Consulier Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
... our chair and the previous chair on keeping, on making sure that the U-Pass continues. I'm happy to see that this enables the conversation for the longer-term process, because it gets a bit of an issue year after year to review it. I think that that long-term commitment on behalf of the students and on behalf of council and the Transit Commission is important. Relating to the fee increase, my comment would just be that, you know, the increases are in place, and it's important for the commission to balance the budgets, and that impact is felt throughout the fees. But I would just say that I hope that we can continue the conversation regarding the U-Pass for summer students. I know that's been a bit of an issue, and you alluded to it, but we have students that continue full course load over the summer months, and they want to see the U-Pass continue through that period, so I know that that will be ongoing conversations, and hopefully the post-secondary institutions can find ways to work with us on that. Thank you.
Merci. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this today, but I'm still seeking assurances from the commission and from OC Transport that they're going to have the capacity for this. We're experiencing significant issues in Kanata. Councillor Wilkinson's doing a public meeting with OC Transport officials, and I've been working with them since the fall on the situation of, for capacity coming out of Kanata into the downtown and then back again at night. So I'm looking for assurances from OC Transport that if we approve this and expand the U-Pass into Algonquin and everything, this is not going to further reduce the capacities that we're experiencing in Kanata and this move to put all our routes to 40-foot buses. Do you have the capacity, Bill?
Mr. Mayor, we do have reserve capacity on all routes. If, as we hope, the U-Pass adoption at Algonquin increases transit ridership to that location, it may be, and it's quite likely, that we will have to reallocate some of that capacity between routes to put it in the places where ridership is growing, but in the system, we do have that capacity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, councillor Hubley. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, your worship. I spoke at numerous occasions at the college to support the students of the college adopting the U-Pass, and capacity was one of the things that most attracted them. We have right on the peripheral of, periphery of the Algonquin College campus, our largest unused transit facility at this point. We've built the huge transit tunnel and below-ground station that just needs to be opened up at the south end, and when it is, it will be one of the largest transit facilities we have and able to accommodate every student easily from the college, and that's one of the main reasons that the momentum's turned around from being against adopting the U-Pass at the college to being for it. And I wanted to congratulate the student governments, both of them, the previous one and the current one, for bringing us to where we are now.
All right, thank you. Councillor Daruz, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. I want to, first, it's a very, it's a great initiative to see our colleague working towards our student. I just want to make sure that our rural resident, that student that they attend Algonquin College, they can opt out the U-Pass, just like the Carlton University and Ottawa student. Thank you.
So, Pat, I think the answer is if they're not in the urban transit area, they're not forced to take the U-Pass. Is that correct?
The agreements with the universities and the college at this point are that the residents who are in the urban transit area or in rural transit area A are covered by the U-Pass program. The people who are in rural transit area B are not, so that's the most rural areas.
Which basically has no transit service. That's satisfactory, councillor. Councillor Wilkinson, please. Now, this is on the U-Pass, not about buses, because we've allocated, dedicated that to the Transit Commission to deal with.
No, no, and I'm on the Transit Commission, so we will be dealing with it there, but I just wanted to say, I've been a great supporter of getting the U-Pass, and I wanted to echo what councillor Fleury said, that now that many universities are going to co-op programs and things, so they're operating year-round, I really think that we need to take a serious look at that, and I recognize it's going to cause even more congestion and things, and I think, Mr. Mayor, that because of the U-Pass program, we really do have to look at having some additional funding, because it is drawing, putting pressure on, and we're having people leave the bus system because it's so crowded with the students that they can't get on. The bus goes by places like Tunnies Pasture, it doesn't even stop the express buses, and people have no choice in our areas. So we do have to take a really hard look at the impact it's having and make sure our system can handle it.
Okay, thank you very much. On the motion as presented, carried. Thank you. The next motion is by councillor Hubley, seconded by councillor Cadri, with respect to renaming Romina Park to Proud More Romina Park. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a short one, so I'll read it out. It's whereas developing community pride in our new communities is important, and our parks in Kanata South are a visual, tangible reminder of the many reasons we can be proud more. And whereas the city of Ottawa Emergency Services recommends distinct park names in order to avoid miscommunications during emergency dispatching and response, and whereas the name Proud More Romina Park is not a commemorative name, it does not fall under the commemorative naming process, and Emergency Services has cleared the name Proud More for the purposes of 911. And whereas the Bridgewood Community Association, the Trail West Community Association have been consulted on the proposed name, therefore be it resolved that Romina Park, which fronts onto Romina Street and Bridgewood Trails, be renamed Proud More Romina Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the motion as presented by councillor Hubley, seconded by councillor Cadri, carried. A motion's requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion exigeant la suspension des règles de procédure. Councillor Fleury, seconded by councillor Cloutier, has a motion because of the timeliness of winterlude approaching us on the placement of 150th anniversary signs on suspension, carried. Councillor Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion will be in front of you. I mean, the title really signifies what it's all about, the delegation of authority for approval of signs for Ottawa 2017. We've assigned Guy Laflamme to work on the scheduling and the calendar relating to 2017. We want to enable him to be able to create partnerships and advertise the special year for us, so this gives them appropriate authority to build these partnerships and implement that strategy.
Do you have anyone else?
Regarding the signs, sorry.
On the motion as presented by councillor Fleury, seconded by councillor Cloutier, carried, adopté. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notice is a motion for consideration at the subsequent meeting. Councillor Egli, seconded by councillor Cadri, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to name a kitchen in a city facility at Tanglewood Park after Franz Geier, who passed away last year. The motion essentially asks us to go straight to council as opposed to the normal standing committee, so that we can have a ceremony at the Winter Fund Day for this, for this community, which Franz used to cook the chili for, so everybody will be there, and it'll be a nice way to recognize him. So this will be dealt with at the next, the next council meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, notice a motion for consideration at subsequent meeting is councillor Tierney, seconded by councillor Cloutier. Councillor Tierney.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At the request of staff, we're putting this forward in regards to the positions that councillor Cloutier and myself hold on FCM and AFMO respectively.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other notices, a motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting? As you had des autres motions à ce moment?
Any other motions? No?
Bylaws, councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, your worship. It's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Fleury, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried, adopté. Confirmation bylaw, councillor Shirelli and Fleury, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Fleury, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of council at the meeting of the 28th of January 2015.
We have not inquiry, but an announcement councillor Hubley would like to make, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just asking all my colleagues to stay after council. We'll do a quick picture with the Bell Let's Talk bracelets. Roger's going to help us out with that, so if we could meet in the middle here after, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, and don't forget when we're tweeting, let's hashtag Bell Let's Talk, because the more tweets, the more funds given to mental health research and advocacy. So thank you, councillor Hubley. Councillor Blay?
Do you have one inquiry? What is the status of the province's review of the aggregate levy rate, and does the city have an infrastructure planned to upgrade rural roads should an anticipated increase in the levy provide additional revenue to the city?
Okay. Any other, do you have a written inquiry, councillor? Councillor Brockington?
I do not. I thought I could raise my hand, and...
Yeah, our preference is to put them in writing, so we have a record of them, but go ahead.
I just wanted to ask through you, your worship, if I could get a breakdown of the 2017 budget and what is being allocated for various festivities and expenditures. Is that already known and published that you could direct me to, or is that something council could receive?
Yeah, it's in the main 2014 budget, and then the new budget for 2017 will be in the budget we table next week.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, adjournment, councillor Shirelli, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Fleury, that the proceedings of council at the meeting of the 20th of January 2015 be adjourned.
Carried, adopté. Thank you all very much. Merci beaucoup. Meeting adjourned.[1653.73]